For April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this is our Special Board of Education on Enrollment and Housing Study Session. And so first we will do roll call. Vice President Wong, President, here, Clerk Coffee.
Present.
Trustee Vannegus will be joining us virtually.
Yes, he said he will log on.
Okay, so we should see him there soon. And that takes us next to public comments. Are there any public comments?
Um, it was maybe.
Well, I tried to submit one on your website. It didn't work. I can read it very briefly.
Sure. Sure, do that. And if the public comments that get submitted online, we did have one. And that was sent to all of us. And our commitment is that we will read those before the meeting when they are sent. And so that has been done. And if you would like it for the record, then it will be.
Well, my name is Sharon Takeda. It was.
Let's have you come sit up here. So you have a microphone. So then it will.
Start of the mic.
Oh.
Be read for.
No, I don't want to wait too long.
There you go.
Now, am I okay? Hey. Okay. I'm going to speak up. I'm not a, I'm a soft-hearted person, so I'm going to kind of yell. Uh, my name is Sharon Takeda, and I live a few blocks away from Southport Elementary School. My comments are as follows. In order to achieve maximum success in reaching your strategic plan for student success, crowding and security issues should be given priority. Southport Elementary is a well-run school and is generally an asset to the neighborhood. In recent years, even though it has become increasingly crowded, as bands have other schools according to my sources, it's become increasingly crowded. For maximum student achievement, uh, does the district plan to construct more schools in the Southport area? Or are current schools going with add-on structures to reduce the crowding? As to security, Southport Elementary is wide open during the day as well as during student departure and arrival times. In conversation with others who live in the area, there is a concern that students and staff could be vulnerable vulnerable to attacks by the unhinged. Are there any plans for safety officers or other security measures being considered to reduce this vulnerability? As a community engagement, I believe that the crack at Southport Elementary is creating bad feelings among community residents. And he, and he drives to school to drop off and pick up their children. There are daily traffic jams in front of the schools and cars are swooping into the neighborhood near Summerfield Drive and making U-turns at the first stop. Off Summerfield, there, uh, there are probably about thirty or more cars that do this on a daily basis. People who live in the neighborhood must take alternate routes to Jefferson Boulevard during drop-off pickup times. The high number of cars arriving at Southports are bringing their children to Southport Elementary. Does this mean that there are not enough schools to comfortably accommodate students in other areas of the city? This brings a full circle to my original question. Does the district plan new or existing schools structure to address crowding? I am a recipient of a good public education. I support all agencies and individuals who endeavor to give the same gift to current and future generations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your public comments. Uh, because of our meeting laws, we can't respond to you, but you have been heard and.
Okay.
For coming.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to my.
Okay.
No.
Okay. And so that now takes us right into our enrollment study and our Assistant Superintendent Business Services. And I should just, it's probably clear here, but so everyone knows this is recorded and will be shared with the public.
Thank you and good evening. Um, this evening is a special board meeting on a very specific topic. It's on enrollment. Um, and also it, you can call it student potential, but it means the potential number of students that may join our district due to development within the area. Back in September, the governing board approved a contract with Cooperative Strategies, who is here today to present the result of the study to do. Um, you can even call it a demographic study of our area to give us an idea of where our enrollment is trending. As we know, it's been trending down over the past few years. And what might that look like for our district? But as I also mentioned, we do have several permits for housing in the area. And what that, what would that look like for our district? And so, um, Justin Rich will be presenting the, the findings from those two studies. And this is a discussion. It's, it's no action that we're seeking. It's for information to help guide decisions in the future. So at this time, Justin, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting and pass the virtual microphone to you.
Thank you. Thanks for the introduction. It's nice to be with you all virtually. Um, I look forward to sharing this information, answering questions and just helping in whatever way we can as the district considers its future. Uh, facility planning policies and different things that you'll be undertaking, no doubt. Um, and hopefully the information that we're providing helps to shape that, guide it. Um, so I am, I'm excited to, to share that. Let me share my screen real quick here.
Justin, I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Okay, great. And then I'll just let you know when to advance the slide.
Yes.
Great. Um, as was mentioned, our team worked on what we generally call demographic studies, but these really took two different forms and they really have two different purposes, two different methodologies. We're going to start with the enrollment projections and I'll talk about briefly the methodology that goes into that and also what we found as a result of our analysis. Um, you can actually go to the next slide. What we use it for, for our enrollment projection methodology, I'm sorry, prior slide. Um, is a methodology that's known as the cohort survival method. Uh, this is a widely used methodology amongst, uh, demographers like ourselves. And what the cohort methodology really does is it relies on two, what we view as being the most important inputs that go into projecting enrollment. Number one is resident live birth counts. Um, we've jumped ahead to that here. Uh, and the second is the cohort survival factors that are calculated. When we look at ten years of historical data, which we looked at for Washington Unified, um, looking at how students progress from grade to grade, year after year. Um, it's, it's important to note that this methodology inherently considers the net effect of many different migration, um, and other demographic trends that are going on. Uh, it considers things like housing, uh, whether that's increasing or decreasing the number of housing units that are being constructed, considers things like dropouts and transfers, um, charter school impacts, open enrollment policies, et cetera. And so the cohort survival factor takes a large popular, all of the students that, that are attending uh, within a district and looks at those changes again on a grade to grade, year after year, uh, perspective. It's important to note that this methodology does not consider, uh, the possible changes in enrollment as a result of things like policy changes. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Um, you know, things like program offerings and other certain demographic trends that we're not forecasting. Uh, we don't know how wealth levels, for instance, in the district may affect future student uh, enrollment trends. Uh, so it really looks backwards over the last ten years and projects that forward. Um, and that tends to do a pretty good job of being able to tell you where your enrollment is headed. Um, I'll just note that our projection methodology is something that we've been using for decades. We've prepared thousands of enrollment projections all across the nation. Um, and our, our methodology, we call it student trends and enrollment projections. It's a, um, it is a software system that we developed in conjunction with the Ohio State University um, and their statistical department. So it's statistically based and, uh, uses something called statistical distribution theory, um, which is why we have a lot of faith and confidence in the results. Next slide. So I mentioned the, uh, the first direct input that's used is resident live birth counts. And as you can see on the map, there are several different zip codes. And I'm sure you're aware of this, just being, um, being in the community as long as you all have, um, that there are two main zip codes that serve the district. And so we collect resident live birth data, um, and compare that to kindergarten class sizes. And looking at that, we develop projection ratios based on how many stu, how many students are showing up in kindergarten based on the number of births five years prior. Those resident live birth counts are collected from, um, from the California Department of Public Health. And, uh, they're based on the residence of the mother. So at the time, um, a birth is recorded, it, it includes the, uh, mother's residence, uh, by, by zip code. And those are what we have compiled here. Um, so we have the historical birth counts and we compare that to, uh, to the kindergarten class sizes, like I mentioned. But then we also project future kindergarten class sizes, uh, because we have data through two thousand twenty-one. That will show up in the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, or excuse me, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Um, so that is the first sort of pillar of our enrollment projections. Next slide. Additionally, I mentioned the cohort survival factors. And we just took a snapshot here. This is the district-wide survival ratios just for, just going back to two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So we actually go a bit further than that, but the chart in the table tends to get a bit unwieldy as we do that. We look at all of these different grade transitions, again, from grade to grade, year after year, to figure out how many kids, once they're in the Washington Unified School District system, how many progress, uh, from grade to grade. And we look at that several different ways. Uh, we look at it by just comparing all years and different, um, different segments of time or, um, di- different durations. And we look at it based on a simple mean or, or average versus a weighted average to try and figure out, are there any trends that, uh, stand out over others? Are there anomalies perhaps? And what might explain that? Um, and that's the sort of analysis that goes into it. You'll note that in those colored rows that are down at the bottom of the table, um, each of them, each one of those cohort survival factors, uh, are accompanied by a standard deviation. So we pay close attention to that because the lower the standard deviation, the more closely it follows the model. And then the larger the standard deviation, uh, the more it diverges from that. Um, this is relevant because as you will have seen in the, um, in, in the enrollment projection report that we provided, and I'll show this in a later slide as well, there's four different projections that we prepare. So we prepare a low, moderate and high projection, and those are all just simply statistically based. Uh, they take the lowest observations, uh, the lowest cohort survival factors that are calculated for each one of these grades by school. Um, and we, we take those and then base the projection off of that. Same thing for, uh, the high projection. And then the moderate is really the midpoint between those two. What we also know is that coming out of something like COVID, uh, knowing other factors that might be going on in given attendance boundaries, you know, for instance, Southport, which was mentioned, uh, perhaps there's higher levels of development that are there or that are planned. Uh, we, we start to take some art, uh, blend art and science frankly. And we will start to, uh, look at whether or not a cohort survival factor that was calculated, perhaps that's, uh, a result of a anomaly that's going on. COVID is a great example of that. And so we may throw out one of those years, um, and see if we can adjust those projection ratios to take into account, uh, those, those anomalies that are happening. And when we do that, that produces a fourth projection, which is our recommended projection. The information I'm showing you tonight is based off of that recommended projection. So, so I'll show you in a couple of slides, some of the results. Again, that's based on the recommended. Um, but in our full report, you will see all four of those projection models, uh, and, and the results of that. Next slide. So looking back at, um, your historical enrollment, I just want to point out one, um, I've, I've highlighted certain cells here in a blue outline to try and demonstrate what the cohort survival factor does and how you'll notice. And when we do this for, for various school districts, you'll start to see bubbles or cohorts of students that are a bit different than what is historically seen. And so for instance, if we went back to two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and we looked at the second grade class at that time, it was six hundred and twenty-five students. In the next year, when they became third graders, it was six hundred and twenty-six. And it generally was a larger group of students as you go year to year, progressing one grade at a time. Uh, and you see that the other class sizes that were, uh, in the system at that time, didn't really follow that same pattern. So what we've done is we've, um, put kind of a heat map on this table so that you could track and see how certain groups of students, um, may have contributed to either increasing enrollment or decreasing enrollment. Um, and what you will see is that over time, once we start getting into two thousand nineteen, twenty and beyond, uh, you, you start to see smaller class slot, class sizes coming into the system at those lower grades versus those that are, uh, coming through the system and graduating. Uh, and that has contributed to some of the decreasing enrollment trends that you've seen over the past several years. Uh, I will just point out that peak enrollment over that time was in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, uh, when total enrollment hit just under seven thousand nine hundred students. Next slide. Uh, we've taken that data and, uh, looked at it a different way, grouping, uh, students together by school level. So, uh, we've separated out transitional kindergarten, uh, grouped kindergarten through eighth grade students together, uh, and then ninth through twelfth stu, ninth through twelfth grade students together as well. We've also separated out district non-public, non-sectarian school students, which show up on, uh, the data that's reported to the California Department of Education, uh, through the seabeds. Um, data that's, that's reported there. And then also Evergreen Middle School, Washington Middle College High School and Washington Unified Virtual Academy. Next slide. A couple of things as we were gathering data, um, a couple of things that we wanted to highlight just in terms of, um, of trends. One has to do with charter school shifts, the number of students that are, um, leaving the district to go to charter school, um, versus those that are returning or coming back from charter schools. Um, I will just note that from two thousand thirteen, fourteen, uh, through two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, which is the data that we have, uh, we saw an increase in the number of students that were coming back to the school district um, from charter schools. And you'll see in those earlier years that, um, it was roughly even, you know, the number of kids that were leaving versus those that were returning. Um, and in some years were higher levels of kids leaving to go to charter schools. Um, but in the last couple of years, that started to change, I would imagine. Um, as we've seen in other communities, that, uh, students, after going through the pandemic, wanted to come back and have a more traditional education. So just one observation there. Um, and then secondly, in terms of inter-district transfers, uh, students that are leaving this, the district to go to a surrounding district or perhaps not so, uh, not, not so close in, in certain cases, um, that there's been an increase in the, the number of students that have been requesting an inter-district transfer student. Last year, that was a hundred and eighty-three. Next slide. So taking all.
Can I stop you just briefly? Do we want to do any questions as this goes, or do you want to wait until the end?
I think it would be helpful. Um, Justin, the question is, is do we want to wait to do questions? I would recommend that we ask throughout. That way we don't miss a point. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely. I think that makes sense, um, given the, um, just as we're going from slide, we're going to be talking about very different things. So why not, uh, take care of that once we're on that, on that topic?
Thank you. I have a quick one right now, and that is that my understanding was that, um, when families, if families choose to pull their children into a charter, that the districts might not know that because they don't have to have a formal release. Is, is that accurate? And if so, how do you get this information?
That is correct. And I'll, I'll, I'll defer to, um, Monique and other folks there. I think the, the data that we gathered is that for which there are records of that. So this may not be comprehensive. However, this is what, uh, the district currently has in terms of tracking those students.
Yes. So conversations with our enrollment team, um, they are refining their tracking. As we were pulling data for this particular study, we uncovered that maybe we didn't have the best systems in the past. And so I'll be working with Jay or Dr. Burns and his team to really get a better tracking system. Um, but indeed, some of the information was, um, that was, I, I won't say missing, but as you said, they don't have to let us know. And so, um, it will take some work on our part to get those calls to say, where are our kids? Where'd you go? Um, help us understand the why, and we'd really love to welcome you back.
I have another question. Uh, private school? No, we don't have any data on number of our kids who move, go on to private school or return from private school.
I don't know. I thought that's a good question.
And then, then piggybacking off that, do we have anything for those that are homeschooled?
I can ask the question.
Okay.
And then picking back. There are predominantly three charters that are in our neighborhood area. Do we know the approximate number of our kids that are going to those schools? Or have left our district to go to those schools?
So we, I think that's part of the question that we're asking is, uh, you know, how many of our students are in our charter schools? We know one charter school doesn't really pick up a lot of our students, but the other charter school may. And so that's a, that's a conversation and a work with our enrollment team to be able to track that a little bit more.
I believe it's in the MOU with Lighthouse that we put it in.
Right.
They have shared with us before.
Yeah.
It's the one with Dex that I'm kind of interested in.
Which we don't have an.
We don't have anything with them. That's why I'm wondering.
And that's private.
This is in Clark'sburg. And a lot of the, a lot of the, like, Bridgeway Lakes area and maybe even some of the, um, Stone Gate area, they, because it's closer to that side, that they may choose Dex as, as a, but they're also river charters. So they're by the same organization that does Lighthouse. They're just authorized by a different body.
But no one's required to give us that information. Which is why the inter-district charter is one that we can control and have a close pulse of. So maybe not for now, but in the future, it'd be nice to see an update of what that form looks like and what the conversations are with families before we sign off on this.
So we have to permit them to leave.
And let's.
Permit them to leave to charters or to other districts?
Other districts. Okay.
Okay.
But inter-district, the one, this next one, inter-district is from school to school within our district, right?
No.
Oh, that's intra.
Oh, okay. This is, and this is if somebody went to Davis.
Got it. Inner district.
Mm-hmm.
Intra-district, district.
And then they fill out a form at districts, then they're released. If we say it's all good.
I'm going to go back to the private school. Is there anywhere to capture that?
I can find out.
Yeah, I mean, it's just an accident interview, but.
We can find.
We're good to know the trends moving out to private school.
And it's, and it, that's if they start with us, obviously.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they will do.
I can point you to a, um, table that's in the enrollment projection report. It's on page eighteen. Um, it takes American Community Survey data, which is a division. Which is, yeah, and in there, it has information about the number of students within your district boundary that are attending public school, uh, versus private school. Now, public school would also include charter schools as well. So it really tells the difference between those that are attending public and private. Um, and again, those, it's an estimate based on the, uh, population that lives within your boundary.
Great.
Thank you for that.
I have a quick.
Yeah.
A quick question.
Voice from beyond.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, now that we're talking about all this, uh, and I know both of our charters are K eights. I believe they're, they go through eighth grade. Um, hi, you know, one of the, one of the questions I'd like to ask is, how, how many students are we gaining from our charters into our high schools as well? Um, is, is maybe something that, that are, you know, because for example, SAC Valley Charter says many of their students are not from West Sacramento. But I do know that some of those students end up going to River City. Um, as from, from, from speaking of family, so just, is there any data points when it comes to students that go through our charters but end up at River City? Um, as a, as a, as a plus in a sense? I don't know who that question is for, but now that we're all kind of talking about it, but throwing that, that piece of data in there.
What I can share is that based on the cohort survival factors, um, when we look at the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, now this is, again, it's the net effect of all of those different factors, including students coming back from, from charter schools perhaps. Um, but that you have almost, uh, cohorts of almost a hundred percent um, for eighth to ninth grade. And then again, depending on the time period, sometimes it's over a hundred percent. So I think that may lend some credibility to that. Um, there, it's, you know, I, I think looking at the last ten years, uh, looking at all of the cohort survival factors in each grade, they're relatively strong. Um, so it's hard to disentangle what's a result of charter school, you know, kids coming back um, versus just being able to retain kids or getting kids at certain points of time to offset those that you've lost. So I think it's a mix of all those things.
Do we know what your, uh, lighthouse was authorized? Or opened, opened their door?
We could figure that out very quickly. You could just go on their site. That is a piece of this.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Thank you. I think we're ready to move on. Move that up on the side.
Okay, we can keep going.
So as I mentioned, uh, we prepare four different enrollment projections, and we've shown that on the graph on the slide here. Um, just to orient, uh, towards the data here. Um, the red line that's on the left side of the graph, that represents the historical enrollment from two thousand thirteen, fourteen through two thousand twenty-one, or excuse me, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. And then those four different lines that, uh, they stretch from two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, over the next ten years. And those are the four different enrollment projections. Uh, you'll see that the projected high, it's a dark purple, almost looks black up at the very top. Um, the gray line that's, that's shown there is the recommended projection that I, uh, talked a little bit about. That's where we start to change some of the projection ratios to try and, uh, account for various anomalies. Um, the sort of teal or greenish-blue color, uh, is the moderate. And then that yellow or gold color is the low projection. Uh, so it gives you a distribution of how things may unfold over time. Again, we base, um, we, uh, I would say have most confidence in the recommended where we can, uh, take all of that data and analyze it. And, um, by looking at other qualitative factors like the amount of development that's happened and looking at more, more specifically at birth trends and things like that, uh, to develop that recommended projection. So this is, uh, those four models plotted onto a single graph here. Um, which is also shown in our report. Next slide. Next slide. If we were to take that data for the recommended projection and break it down by grade, this is the table that you'll see here. I'll just, um, reference back to that table that you saw uh, several slides ago where it showed those shades of red showing how, uh, certain groups of students were uh, progressing from grade to grade each year. And you saw a lot of red that was involved there, and it started to get lighter and lighter as you moved, um, as you moved sort of from left to right as, as the years progressed. Similarly, here you start to see lighter shades of blue, and what that's indicating is that those grades are starting to decrease. They're, they're smaller than the other grades, uh, relative to the prior years. Um, what we see is, for instance, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a projection of six hundred students at the twelfth grade level. Um, but you'll see that, uh, shrink over time, and I will just point to the fact that kindergarten's class sizes are, uh, shrinking as well. Um, and so as a result of that, you have more kids going out than are being replenished with new kids coming in. And that's, that's the major driver, uh, of the projected decrease in enrollment. Um, that is largely because of birth rates and looking at those historical, uh, numbers of live births. There's less than there was before in the zip codes that serve the district. Now, the one caveat to that is the fact that transitional kindergarten is being implemented. We're, uh, you know, essentially in the second year of that. And so we will continue to see some increase in TK enrollment, uh, which will offset some of those enrollment decreases. Now, I do just want to take a minute to talk about how we've projected enrollment. So, um, looking at the kindergarten class size, um, of the each succeeding year, if we were to rewind one year and look at the number of, um, the, the number of TK can, TK students that, that would have been in the system at that time. We develop a projection ratio off of that, but then we make the adjustment to account for the additional months of eligibility that are, um, each, each year as those additional months are become eligible, we, um, adjust the number of TK kids as a result of that. And so, uh, that's why you see those numbers increasing over the next three years, uh, and then being held constant two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven and beyond.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
As I look at the diagonal, it, it's semi erratic. It grows. The kinder, if you take it all the way up to ten, there is a increase in class size. Mike, I'm not, might not have it aligned correctly.
Yeah, then, so you'll, you'll see that four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and eighty, four fifty-two, four hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah.
And then four hundred and fifty-three, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so it grows.
What, what we've done, because we only have five years worth of data, we can only project out to two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then we don't have any new birth data in order to be able to, to project that out. What we've done is we've taken an average of the three prior years, and we've used that average to, to take that, uh, to take that out. So, um, that's not based on real data. It's just based on our best guess. Rather than trending that down, we're, we're using just a simple average of the three prior years.
Cause also enrollment looks like are, we're gonna lose twenty seniors between this year and next year too. Again, ju- just something curious, right? Like you, so that's just kind of better understand your projections here. So you're confident in five years, but we're also looking at attrition in our secondary grades.
Yeah, that's right. And I, I would say for those grades that, um, you know, depending on the year and depending on the grade, that's, that's based on kids that are already in the system, and then we're just applying, we're applying the survival factors to those. Um, as you start to get further out, and now we have to project and, uh, excuse me, project kindergarten enrollment as opposed to basing it off of the number of births that are happening within the district, we start to lose confidence in, in the projection. So I would say, you know, near term, those, those early grades, including kindergarten, uh, you know, we have a high degree of confidence in that. But once we get past the point where we can, uh, tie the kindergarten class size back to the number of births, um, it becomes a little bit harder to, to do that. And, and that would apply for those, those younger grades towards the, um, towards the end of the projection timeline.
So you, you are confident that the first five years are solid projections, is what I'm hearing?
Through two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, those are based on actual birth numbers that we have currently. So yeah, there's, there, there is a higher degree of confidence in that.
Okay. Because, uh, you know, you, you, you guys do this, and first five, we track data because that's I have birth data. There's a de, there's an extreme decrease in live birth rates, so the, the numbers could actually be drastically smaller than past twenty-six, twenty-seven, right?
Certainly they could if those trends hold. Um, yeah, certainly that is the case, but.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was, I was just gonna say, but then we're only talking about the, the kindergarten class sizes and then those subsequent grades that are based on those birth projections. So I, I concede that that is not as accurate as looking at the students that are already in the system.
Correct. I mean, part of this conversation is, as we heard today, is like, should we be buil- building new schools when the birth rates are declining? And there is, I, I think that's the conversation, right?
I agree. Yeah. And, and not to bury the lead.
Housing factors, right? Like that we're, even with how, there, we're not catching up to the, the extreme decrease in birth, live births. Is that, I'm sorry, jump, I may have jumped ahead a little bit, but.
No, that's okay. And not to bury the lead, but I think that's the important thing to talk about here is that this really is the tale of two different reports. And, you know, on, on the one hand, we, we show based on the enrollment projections, really based on the current trends that you're going through. We see, uh, enrollment decreasing, but when we look at the, the amount of development that is projected to happen that is in the pipeline, whether it's planned or, uh, approved at this point, or even potential beyond that. Uh, there is so much potential for growth. So that's why, um, I think this is particularly uh, challenging is that you have to sort of reconcile those two different pictures, and, and we'll definitely talk a lot more about that.
I, and I think that for public, we're, we're, people trying to reconcile that, right? Like, not, unless you're not, uh, you're in the business of tracking live births, it's not. Um, it's, people see housing going up, but not, not necessarily seeing the babies. And there's a, there's a factor to that as we think about our enrollment projections and spacing on school sites. This is a statement of question.
All right, if there's no more, no other questions, next slide. On this slide, we have a table that shows the projected enrollment, um, by school. And on the far right-hand side, there's a trend line there. If you can make it out, it shows generally, uh, what's, what's happening at we, at each one of those schools. I will point out that generally what we're seeing, and again, this is based on our recommended projection, um, is that enrollment is going down. One exception that I wanted to point out is for Stonegate where we see a slight increase over the next few years. Uh, and then it starts to decline again, but it's still, um, it's, you know, looking at next year uh, versus ten years out, ten years out is still a little bit higher than what we expect for next year. So, um, again, generally the trend is declining over time, sort of a gradual decline, um, with that exception of Stonegate.
Well, and as we know, Stonegate has those, you know, homeschooling in right now. But we know from Planning Commission that other, you know, places are approved in other areas.
That's correct.
Can I ask just a basic question? These trends have taken into account those housing, those housing developments?
So it takes them into account, um, through the cohort survival factor, right? So if there has been development historically, and that's contributed to a higher cohort survival factor, which we know is the case, then that will carry forward, uh, into those projection ratios. So yes, it has been accounted for, uh, inasmuch that those trends hold true. What we'll talk about once we go into the student potential study is, are those development levels going to be substantially higher in the future than what you've seen in the past? And that's where I think you will diverge, and you may see a lot higher, um, projected enrollment. And that's, that's really the difference between our projection model that looks at the next ten years and our student potential analysis, the housing study that looks out over the next fifty to seventy-five years.
Fifty to seventy-five? Oh, my gosh. Okay. We'll be here.
We won't be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
I'd be a hundred.
Factors to consider here as we, uh, wrap up this discussion on the enrollment projections is just the importance of, as was pointed out, um, looking at live birth trends and how that may affect future projections. Um, and just monitor, coming out of COVID, what we're noticing nationally is that there's a lot of, you know, we were expecting more students to come back in certain cases, and that didn't happen. In other cases, more students came back than what was, was projected. So I think there's, there's a lot that has to do with the individual circumstances in each community, in each district. Uh, and so just the importance of monitoring that and, uh, reflecting on what has changed. Um, and then also just wanted to point out the following factors that can cause significant changes in projected student enrollment. Um, I, I really put these into two different categories. One are policy-related, uh, changes, and then others have to do with community demographics. Policy changes might include things like changing boundaries, uh, the opening or closing of schools, programs that are offered, um, and then things like grade configuration, if that gets shifted around. And then in terms of community, uh, community demographics, certainly development, like we'll talk about next, um, planning and land use changes, and then overall just demographic trends that are happening as the people that move into West Sacramento, are those different than historically, uh, who's been in the community? And, um, are, are they different just in terms of the number of kids that they have, more or less? Um, and how does that impact enrollment, uh, you know, at each one of the schools? So those are things that, um, I think we'll just continue to, to monitor and, and see how that plays out for, uh, not only your enrollment, but how enrollment's projected in the future. All right. Shall we, any, any questions before we move on to the student potential analysis?
Nope.
All right. So just to take a moment to talk a little bit about, um, the difference between these studies because they, they truly have very different methodologies, uh, and, and that's important to, to note. We do not use the cohort survival method when we're looking at student potential. What we're doing instead is really focused on of the housing units that we know that are within the district and the future housing units that may, um, you know, that, that may be constructed in the future. If we looked at the number of kids that are coming out of each home and we applied that forward, what would enrollment look like? What could the, the, the potential for students look like in the future? That's why this study gets its name. Um, it does not include things like birth trends. So the fact that birth trends are going down obviously is gonna have an impact on the results of this study. Um, again, I mentioned the fact that we're looking at different timelines as well, uh, whereas it's, uh, much more acute to look at the number of kids in a specific grade and then, uh, matriculating them forward and, and seeing how that might change over time, when we're just taking a snapshot of the number of kids and, um, you know, looking at, applying that to the number of housing units now and ten, twenty, thirty, forty years from now. Um, you know, it doesn't really take into account those, uh, you know, the bubbles of students that might be going through other trends that might be happening. Um, and then finally, I just, I fundamentally think that the student potential analysis is, goes to the heart of some of those questions that, uh, were brought up. Should you be building additional school facilities? Where should those be in order to be able to serve, uh, the, the enrollment demand that's happening within the district? Um, and this study should help with that. Um, but again, I think it needs to really be taken in tandem with your enrollment projections to be able to answer some of those questions. Uh, whether there's near-term planning decisions that are made or more long-term, uh, that may relate to how you manage your assets and where you might want to have a future school facility or, uh, you know, things of that nature, nature that are the bigger strategic questions. I think this is a really important piece of that.
Yeah. Uh, Justin, can I just ask you just a really basic question?
Yeah.
The live birth makes sense to me because it's live births and those trends and, and behaviors and when that people have live babies makes sense to me. This is just, uh, can you help just break down the methodology? Like, it's just, where do you get five students off ten home? Like, is it research-based? Is it, is it the trend here in West SAC? Is it, uh, 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 County, Yolo County? Like, I, I just want to better understand because the live birds are just straight up, like, really easier for me to understand. I'm trying to understand the methodology here. How do you get the five, ten? Where's the, where are those data from?
That, those are great questions, and, and we're, these slides will go into that a little bit more, but let me just tell you generally where we get the information from. So, uh, working with the county and working with the county assessor, we can get a comprehensive database of every parcel of land that is within West Sacramento, that is within your school district. And based on that, we can identify what the land use code is for each and every one of those parcels. Once we do that, there's addresses that are associated with it, and we can take your student data and match to those parcels of land to figure out exactly how many single-family homes are within the district and how many students have been matched to those single-family homes. So that's the methodology that's, that's used to get to that point. So this is not countywide, this is not statewide, this is not nationally, this is specific to Washington Unified School District. Um, what's, what's on the screen here is just a very, you know, a simple snapshot of the exercise that we go through. If we were to look at a given block, uh, in, in your district, a given neighborhood, and there were ten homes in that neighborhood, and we counted that there were five students that came out of those ten homes. Very simply, the student yield factor, which is what we call this, uh, would be point five because there's, for each two homes, there's one kid. And so that's, um, that's essentially how we get to that calculation.
And when you say students, you're talking about our students or like the, the, what we were talking about, the charter school students and the private school students? Or, so when you say that, is it just our, like, help me understand that too?
It's just your students.
Just, okay.
Just your students.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha. So there's that other factor of everything. We talked about charter school, if they're going to charter school, if they're going to private school, just not, it doesn't go into this factor.
No. Only in this factor, you have just the students that are currently within Washington Unified School District, and they have a student record. Uh, we are able to match those to the various land use types, various, whether it's single-family homes, multifamily homes, et cetera.
Okay. So theoretically, it could be more students. Anyways, I, I'll hold my question. More students that aren't, like, it could have a higher, just general student yield, but it's, it's, it, it could be reduced because of our enrollment. Our, our current enrollment of current students, okay? Because you could, yeah, for, for, for purpose of this conference, not that it's true. Half of, half of the young, the student, the, the children, school-aged, could be going to private school, but that's not necessarily captured in this factor.
It's not, no.
Okay. That's all you just, just wanted to illustrate that this is just our current. Yeah.
That's correct. Just, just the students.
I heard it like. Heard it, heard it. Okay. Thank you, Justin.
You bet. Next slide. And so what this, um, very intimidating-looking graph in, in charge, so, uh, is, uh, this is, this is looking at the single-family homes that are within the district. So the table or graph that's on the left-hand side, um, it looks at two different da- data points there. It looks at the age of the home, uh, it also looks at the assessed value of the home. And then each one of those values in between those, where those two axes, uh, intersect, it, it tells us what the student generation, what the yield factor is, uh, based on those two different variables. Um, it's interesting because I think what we find is that there is a, uh, you know, a, a very direct relationship. Direct relationship between the age of the home. And, and the student generation, what we refer to as sort of that, the development cycle. And how housing matures, just as, as it's related to. Student generation or student yields over time. And that's reflected in the line graph that's shown on the right hand side. The, the gray line shows for each one of those years. So the age of the home, it shows. Shows those different. Factors, but then the, the kind of dark red line shows that smoothed trend. And what you'll see is that right about. For, for some reason, this, this graph isn't showing that the labeling on the bottom isn't, isn't aligning just right. But what it shows is that. Roughly about year 12 or 13 after a home has been built is when you get your peak student generation. And I think anecdotally, that's, that sort of lines up with. My experience of a young family buying a home, having multiple kids perhaps. And once you get into that 10 to 10 to 12 year range is probably when. You'll be getting the most number of kids out of, out of a given home. So. That's what that yield model shows us and that's what we use. In order to take both the existing homes that are within the district and we know the age of each one of those homes. And then future projected development and we apply that yield model to it where it starts out low. It gradually builds to a peak and then declines. Towards, towards the backend of the model and we apply that to each and every. Again, home with that's currently within the district and then those that are planned for the future. Next slide. So on this slide, we're, we're showing just that. That prior point that was made, how do we know what those yield factors are? This is where that data comes from, where we've identified each and every one of those different. Housing types that are within the district. And then the number of units that come out of each one of those housing types. So. The table on the left shows the results of that calculation. The map on the right will, it shows where those. Existing developments are located and color codes them based on the legend that's in the map there. Single family is that darker green color. And then the various multifamily housing types, apartments, condominiums, mobile home parks and townhomes are shown in other colors there. But what that shows us is that the student yield for each of those housing types can vary based on those different. Development types on the low end. Mobile homes and condominiums are just about point one. Whereas single family homes are point three six. And so. We take those, those yield factors and apply that. Again, to future homes that are constructed, that are projected to be constructed within the district. To determine how many kids might be coming. Coming from those new developments. Any questions here before?
Yeah. Can I ask a quick question? How do you differentiate between a condominium and a townhome?
It's a challenging one, right? I mean, in this day and age, developers call them condominiums or townhomes and it's, it's hard to. Make a distinction between them. I think generally speaking, townhomes tend to be on slightly larger lots and may have common walls. Whereas condominiums tend to have more common walls on, on slightly. Smaller parcels of land. In your particular case, there were only two townhome projects that we identified. Let me just pull that up real quick. And in both of those cases. They were specifically, specifically called out that way. And so it was a little bit easier to, to identify them as such. We also can cross reference that data. With the assessor data, there, there's a land use code in there and they might. They might distinguish that differently. Again, the assessor may do that.
So zero lot line homes are considered just single family homes?
Zero lot line homes, I would, I would assume may be, be called a townhome.
Well, I don't, I don't know because only 11. I'm thinking of all the ones that have.
Yeah, there's a ton.
Lakes and everywhere else. So. I don't, and, and when you look at that graphic, it shows like 100 students in an area that's new that has kind of zero lot. So I. I would probably assume just based on this map and where we know houses are. That it's not townhome if it's saying it yields 11.
So they gotta be considered single family then?
So the, the two townhome developments that are currently within the district, again, based on. The, the various data that we collected. And again, there's, there's a map that corresponds with it. There's, they're, they're numbered. Number 120 and number 121. It's the Harriet Lane Townhomes and the Pecan Street Townhomes. And combined, there are about 57 units.
120 and 121.
The next slide has the names. So the two townhomes are Bridge District. Yeah, everything else is bigger. Multifamily. It's on there. It's in the next slide.
I don't, yeah, I still don't see it on the map.
It's, I don't think it's on that. It's on, it's no. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking and I'm not seeing it either. I can, I can follow up with more precise location of where those are. That's helpful.
The, the townhomes?
Yeah.
The townhomes you have listed on the next slide at. Estimated completion, Bridgeway District Phase Six and 284th Street.
And I'm actually talking about the existing homes that are within the district. Not planned.
Not planned future. Okay.
Page 16. Of the report.
So next one.
Moved and under review.
So, okay. That's a different map. Span.
Yeah, the map that would have that is on page 12 and. I just don't see. Those particular labels there. So we could zoom in and provide a map that shows a little closer view of that. So you can see specifically where those are.
I, I guess it's not. Yeah.
Okay.
Not informative at the moment. Just more of a curiosity and where they are.
And page 16 of the report, it does list. At least where the students are going. So Westmore Oaks and West Village. So that can give us an idea of, of where they are here in West Sacramento.
That's a great point. Yeah. What you'll notice is that in each of those two townhome developments. Very different student yield based on the existing data. So. One of them's generating nearly a kid per, for every two homes. The other is a point zero three. So. Quite a bit lower.
Tiny.
Thank you, though. It is an interesting distinction of. The two, because we do have a lot of. Building happening too, that. Is very compact. I see where it is.
Yeah.
I think we're okay to move on though.
Yes. We got Pecan Street.
This slide shows the projected development. This is, these are developments that are, are either currently underway. They're approved or they're. At some point in the approval process, they're either under review or, or they've been proposed. And so. This slide shows all of those. Future homes, again, ones that we would consider active developments because they're either planned underway. Or approved. Similarly, the map shows where those, those various projects are located. And then in the table, it shows the housing type, the number of units. The approximate timeline, if we were able to get that information. And then the elementary that. That those particular projects, what the elementary attendance boundary currently is for each of those. We, we also show two different calculations there in terms of. The maximum enrollment, if we can think back to that yield model that I showed how that. Increases and then sort of peaks and then starts to come back down. The maximum enrollment shows us that peak while the mature enrollment shows us. At, at the end of the day, you know, roughly 35 years or so. What we can expect that enrollment to sort of settle in at. And so those are those last two columns that are shown there. Next slide. Can't tell if that's the same slide or just an extension of.
That's the next one.
Oh, okay. So, so this is just a continuation of. Of that slide. Oh, yeah.
2056.
It looks like the table is just continuing and it was a different page on the report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's somebody else's problem. 2056. Good Lord.
Yeah, I think, again, just, just reflecting back on. The timelines, what the near, the outlook for the near future is versus the long term timeline, timeline. I think there are a lot of larger projects that are. At some point in the development process, but may not have a clear road ahead in order to be able to, to start construction and those may. Go up, you know, 10, 20 years from now, some even beyond that. So I think. That picture may, may change in the coming years based on how the economy. You know, we're in a rising rate, rate environment currently, how might that affect things? You know, to, to the extent that there's not other. You know. Developable land that is close to infrastructure that may accelerate the timeline for, for some of these units. So I think that's an important thing to, to monitor.
Can I ask another question? And that is that, for example, Elkhorn Village, it's on the map 124. For the name eight, five, one Sacramento Avenue, those apartments. And you can see all that now. It shows estimated completion 2024. And it, and it shows 111. What I'm seeing is students. When you make these projections, is it? Are you projecting it's 111 upon approval? Of a project or like, sorry, completion of a project?
Yes, that's correct. Those, those calculations are based on the completion of that project.
Okay. So we, we're saying that maybe just by 2024, very soon that there might be 111.
Across the district. So depending on.
Well, no, this is saying.
I'm sorry. When I said, I meant across the grade levels. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we, we also know that overnight, we don't have 111 students, right? So that's why the, it, it just interest, student potential versus enrollment. It, it's hard to reconcile.
Although when you drive by this, it's like.
It's huge, but then you imagine. Based on student potential, we should have 111 overnight. Our enrollment doesn't project, I mean, according to the student potential, potentially 111, but it's not yielding 111. If that's what you're trying to find.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. So that's.
Next year. But we also know it's not gonna, well. I, it just, I'm a, I'm a practical person. That just doesn't happen. No, I mean, it might overnight.
Yeah. Well, they haven't had building like that.
And I, you know, I, I wonder as well for. For an apartment project that is nearly 500 units, how long will that take to occupy? And? How might the? You know, the demographic makeup of the folks that move in there. Will we be seeing roughly point two, five student yield? For, for those units in the same way? If, if we simply look at the historical numbers, that, that is what it indicates, but. Again, I think that, that it's likely to take a while to, to fully occupy a building like that and. Perhaps that delays. You know, that over. You know, some months. And. Could take a little while, if that's any. Saving grace there. But that is, that is an important distinction that is TK through 12.
Yeah. And, and again, we know enough about Elkhorn to know like, well, even if it's 111 across, like you're getting the, it just. There's just a lot of factors that play into whether or not. Elkhorn will be at capacity. Even with the additional 111 over at the maximum.
May I ask a question? Justin, when you all were doing this analysis, did you take into account or have the information to take into account? The type of housing, for example, if it's senior housing or anything like that?
In, in those instances where we, if we knew that it was senior housing, we have listed it as such. But if that was unknown or if that was, you know, a, a change at some point in time. And, and we didn't know that, then that's, you know, that, that happens too. I know that during the entitlement process, those things might shift and at one point they might, they might've been. You know. Perhaps just, just traditional. Single family homes, but then later on. We, we've had a couple of developments that, that we were working on where. Just the market it shifted to age restricted or active lifestyle or. You know, tho- those sorts of things. So we, we note it when, when we're aware of that, when we can.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the question because that's actually the, the side conversation I was having with President Kirby Gonzalez's. Garbo, I had thought that was active living. Right? And so even though there's a projected number, I thought there was actually an active, so that, yeah. I'd, it wasn't age restricted, but it was active. I think I had thought originally when I, when I moved here 15 years ago. So it could have changed. Things always change.
Their proposal was just extended and I don't, it didn't. Do that, but are we? Are those coming to you? Are you having a close conversation with the city when they're extending projects?
It depends on the project. And yeah, it completely depends on the project. Some, we have had a conversation. Were in conversation on one particular one since it's changing a little bit. But that I've only, since I've been here, that's the only one that I've had a conversation.
Which one was it?
Great question. I don't recall. I see that. I'd have to check to make sure. One other, one other reason why I wanted to ask that question. Was, you know, senior housing or it might be housing to help with homelessness and.
Mercy housing on here.
Excuse me?
Yeah, mercy is, mercy houses on here.
Mercy. It may be more of a temporary stay. Or for families and it may be housing where we have a little more turnover than we might expect.
Sure.
At other places.
And that kind of gets to my point of. Do we know the price point of any of the apartments or the condos? That are being proposed? Because that would suggest, you know, stages in life, right? So. Just curious.
And home interest rates. I mean, you can't buy a home easily right now too. I mean, there's so many factors with, why people would. Rent versus.
So thank you for letting me ask that question.
No, no, thank you because I was just, it was a question I asked, but I appreciate you lifting it up. I was curious. Because mercy is clearly, we know mercy housing is. Or the unsheltered or. Families, it goes in transition.
Going on? Hey, Justin, we're.
And we're ready. Okay.
Thank you. On, on this slide, just to, to demonstrate or sort of compare. As we do the student potential analysis, we're, we're aware of, again, those, those projects that are at some point in the development timeline. But what we also are asked to do and what we've done in, in your district's case. Is consider what about that land that's not currently zoned for housing? But that may be changed in the future. And how do we approach that kind of a situation? So on the left hand side shows the, the current zoning. For, and, and all the various land uses that are currently. um for and and all the various land uses that are currently within the district. And then on the right hand side, what we've done is we've looked at those areas that are uh currently commercial um or are, you know, perhaps vacant uh residential land that are not currently um you know, in in the planning pipeline at this point. And we've looked at that vacant developable land to to try and figure out. Um if that was to build in the future, what might that do? And you'll see on the map on the right hand side, they're color coded a couple of different ways. Uh there are sort of light blue um parcels of land and then there's the darker blue. The darker blue represents those um that that land that is closer to existing infrastructure like water sewer uh et cetera, and then the lighter shade of blue represents those that are further away from the existing infrastructure. So so that map uh shows that that additional land that uh we've identified that could be constructed in the future and we factor that that in to the the student potential analysis as well. Just to make a point here, um all of that land is within the Southport Elementary Boundary. Um but again, I would emphasize the fact that that is further out on the development timeline and likely to come after all of those other projects that we've identified um have already constructed.
Justin, I hate to go backwards, but um the chart like just, I I I just, I had an aha moment of the the maximum versus mature enrollment, you had said mature enrollment is after twelve years, right? Maybe I was trying to kind of understand.
Maximum enrollment is after twelve years.
After twelve years. Okay, so the ma- when we look at that number, it's twelve years from now, Elkhorn will get a hundred and eleven.
Yeah, just just generally based on the the trends that we've identified. Uh it it tends to be right around year twelve.
So so like this is not a, so so my example of Elkhorn overnight getting a hundred and eleven, that's not it, it's twelve years from now, after the end of that development of twenty twenty four. That over the grade span over twelve years, the maximum number would be a hundred and eleven.
I would note the difference between single family homes uh versus rental apartments where that tends to be a little bit more transient and, you know, people coming in and out.
Yeah, I I just I just want to kind of understand the number like the, not the home type, but I'm trying to understand the data. That when you have the maximum and mature enrollment that we're actually, I just, I had the aha moment of like, just using the Elkhorn Village where the maximum enrollment of a project that just will complete it in twenty twenty four will be a hundred and eleven at twelve years.
Yeah, that's that's right. It it takes a while for them.
But that also isn't what you said when I asked, I, well, I'm just just to go back, because I said it, it says it will be completed at twenty twenty four. Are you saying it could be at this enrollment? And I thought the answer was yes. So I'm trying to understand this.
That's why I need clarification.
Yeah, just just to clarify, we in in apartments, uh we don't see that same kind of trend where it takes a while to reach maximum enrollment. In apartments, it doesn't really follow that same model and it's more erratic. So when I, when I was talking about that maximum enrollment um and how that changes over time, I was talking specifically about single family homes.
Okay, thank you. But I just want to understand the columns. That that is intentionally what you're trying to say, though.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, regardless of yes, it's erratic in apartments, but just for the purposes of understanding the chart, I know it's apples to lemons, but but it's just really understanding that maturity rate, the maturity versus the maximum is is about what's the difference between the mature and maximum enrollment? Let's just start there.
So so the difference of enrollment, not until twenty fifty six.
Okay.
Is it possible that? I I think I understand what you're saying. Is it possible that the maximum enrollment? Because it's so erratic with um apartments, that it could reach a hundred and eleven before the twelve year? But if it goes to the twelve year, it can reach a hundred and eleven. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, uh uh specifically for for apartments, we expect that it's going to change over time and it doesn't gradually, it it doesn't follow that same yield model as single family homes. Uh whereas that's a little bit more predictable, where where we see it start out low and gradually increase over time reaching a peak right around years, you know, between ten and fifteen years, and then it starts to fall off. There there's a prior slide that goes that yield model and that's specifically for single family homes.
Or or let me just use another one, uh line map ID one forty six, one forty seven, Yarbo Magnolia. You have Southport with maximum yield at fifty and then um Bridgeway at thirty, that's to be expected across the grade span, because that's, and that's multifamily. So you're saying it'll be fifty year, fif- fifty fifty students maximum at twelve years.
That's right.
Okay, so, oh. Apartment's different, but I I think just trying to understand yours, like, like I don't want people to think, okay, it's done in twenty twenty six and all of a sudden we'll find fifty students tomorrow. It is twelve, twelve years from now, we'll get fifty students across the grade span. Okay, gotcha. I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted like, because someone could look at first like, oh, wait, it's done and we'll all sudden have like fifty students tomorrow. That's not true. What the yield is, is that twelve years from now, fifty student for Magnolia Yarbo maximum number of kids will be fifty year, fifty students. However, the birth rate is, okay, yes. That's why we pay you the big bucks, Justin, I uh.
So Justin, this is Moni, just to to verify, or I guess I have a question. For apartment complexes, um when would you say is a reasonable timeframe um for apartment complexes to reach that max number or that I like to call it the peak enrollment?
I believe that's sooner than what you would expect for single family homes. And
Sooner than twelve years, but.
But it's erratic.
Yeah.
And so it can fluctuate um due to the the demographics of the housing of the apartment complex due to a variety of factors versus the single family home, correct?
That that's correct.
Okay.
We don't really know.
Go ahead.
And I would just say that there's a smaller sample size generally. Uh we have a lot more single family homes within your district that we can refer back to and the data is more predictable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we're ready to keep going.
And I go like the my Southport school, right? Like so, the live workspace, but I can find those three kids tomorrow once they're done, right? Because that seems reasonable that I'll get to three, once it's built.
Gotcha.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, right, like, that's reasonable to assume the apartment will get.
That doesn't keep us up at night. It's the big numbers that keep us.
Yeah, yeah. We can take, let's do. Yeah. So single family homes, multi homes, twelve years, apartments, much more erratic, less than twelve years, we just don't really know.
Yeah, so generally, I think in order to buy a single family home, um that that's going to um that that takes a different level of being able to afford that and qualify the loan and to probably you you will stay in that home for a longer period of time. Um and on the whole, when we're looking at all those demographic trends, there tends to be uh a predictable cycle in terms of the number of kids. Again, we're looking in at added in aggregate that based on the year that that home was constructed and occupied. Um then it tends to grow over a period of time, I think mirroring what a a generally a uh you know, a family or the the aggregate uh you know, of of a family moving into those homes. And then over time, kids come through the school system and then factor out and then there's a period of time where um you know, that community has aged and that, you know, that group of homes has aged and there's no more kids coming out unless it turns over. Um so I think that's why you you see that different cycle of development and that's a little bit different than apartments.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question? We, when you go to many of our apartments, I mean, we know for like National Night Out and from business, they're very full of children. And we also know that we've had a lot of refugees in our city. That's impacted, um we see that very clearly in our schools. So were your apartment numbers that you looked at higher than maybe other cities in terms of how many children were there?
I wouldn't say they're higher because the in in certain cities, they are really high and you might see, you know, over a point five and that's not what we saw here, for instance.
Okay.
You know, multi general eight generational, multi fam- you know, multiple um families perhaps living in single units and things like that, that happened a lot um. You know, following the Great Recession, um more more recently, you know, um so I wouldn't say that they're higher than than what we see in other places, but those are certainly very strong um student generation or student yield factors.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now back to this map. Sorry.
Uh that's, if if there's no questions on this, I think there, I would go to the next slide, which is really just sort of the culmination of that student potential model and what we've done is we've looked at um the this layer cake, probably a good way to to describe this, the bottom three layers represent the existing housing that's within the district. Um and that's comprised comprised of single family, um non subdivided, single family homes. Uh and then the pink layer there is apartments, condos, townhomes and mobile home parks. Um and what you'll see is that subdivided, single family homes that 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 are there they're starting to trend down and that's based on that yield model um and looking at the age of all the various homes. Um and and that's why you see that start to decrease over the next, you know, ten to fifteen years. Then on top of that, and and it's outlined in blue there are the future developments. There's that light green color and light pink color and that represents the currently developing, single family homes and then the developing, multifamily homes, again, all those categories of apartments, condos and townhomes. And then on the very top is future development that, you know, is vacant land that that parcels of land that we've identified that could be built in the in in the future. Um and what this does is it assumes that that roughly forty units a year, which really lines up with what we've seen over the last uh five to ten years within your district. Um about forty units are a a year are applied to uh those vacant, developable land um and and how that might um construct, beca- because we don't have firm development plans for that, but we want to account for it in in some way. So so we look at those um in each year, we break out another forty units for that vacant de- developable land. Um what this shows is that based on that model, we expect that maximum enrollment would be hit right around two thousand fifty six. Uh and that would be uh just about ten thousand four hundred students. And then the mature enrollment, again, once the yield model has sort of gone through its cycle uh that would be hit somewhere around two thousand eighty nine and would settle in. Um it's getting cut off there, but it's right at nine thousand eight hundred and seventy, so just under ten thousand. So that's once all of the homes have been constructed and um and it's sort of settled in, again, that's decades down the road, but that's where we would expect to see uh student enrollment at that time.
In twenty eighty nine, when I may or may not be on this earth.
That's right. I think um, yeah, it'll it'll take a while to get there, but that's just in terms of what we see for for the need for the more foreseeable future, if if we talk over the next couple of decades, you might expect to see somewhere closer to you know, eight thousand to nine thousand students and then beyond that, you know, I think that you can expect it to settle in right up, right below that uh ten thousand uh enrollment mark.
So let me ask you this, Justin. It looks like in twenty thirty six, thirty seven the decline in existing housing student potential stops. And is that because the developments are now pulling that number up with the the client, the, I guess, the birth rate going down still, that's where the the the, I guess what's it called, the I think you develop me, new development, the studies out, the 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 lack of uh birth rate?
I think Justin said this doesn't take in account birth rate. This is just literally the number of kids in.
I get that, I get that, but I'm I'm looking at twenty six, thirty or thirty six, thirty seven. It goes down and then it flatlines. And then I'm looking at where the development is and that number's still increasing. So what what is making that number flatline on the existing development side with the student potential?
So that is the student yield model as as I pointed out, and that's looking at the age of the homes that are currently that that are already constructed within the district in the age of those homes and as they age, they will start to come back down um into that more mature enrollment, right? Beyond twelve to fifteen years or so.
Yeah.
So that's why it starts to decrease is because the age of the those homes are reaching the point where student student yields start to decrease after they hit their peak.
So you're saying the student potential is going to be higher in twenty four twenty three, twenty four than it will be in thirty six from existing housing. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Let me also ask this to to just find, this is the student potential model doesn't take in live births. Just be, declare so.
And I think
Different question. How do districts reconcile live births versus student potential? How do others figure this out? Because they're totally different methodologies.
Yeah, and I I would say they they really need to be used in for two different purposes, right? And I think that when when you're planning, a- again, for the large strategic decisions on whether I build a new school and um do I consider closing schools in certain instances or tho- those sorts of decisions that this is a helpful tool for that to show what the potential might be. But when you're looking at your near term, five to ten years um the the enrollment projection is going to be more accurate. Um I I would also say that in my experience um enrollment projections and things like these housing studies or build out studies um tend to be used in really two different ways. Um when we're thinking about enrollment or the potential of enrollment from a ongoing budgetary perspective, we might have a very different view and look at that in a different way when we're making decisions about basing our budget off of ADA three to five years from now, right? And when we're thinking about long term planning decisions, because of the length of time it requires in order to make those sorts of things that you tend to look at more conservative, in this case, conservative meaning higher levels of enrollment because you don't want to have, you you don't have the time to reverse course or to make drastic changes to your facility plan. So I think you keep it in those um different views as well. Um I think that if you were to look at you know, if we hit that student peak, uh the the maximum enrollment of, you know, say ten thousand four hundred students, does that justify two or three new elementary schools? Well, maybe not, maybe we're only talking about one or two. And then I think what you would do is you would look at a potential new elementary school in a spot where you're not drawing from um you know, they're they're not built too closely together so that it becomes challenging to draw attendance boundaries and things like that. Um so I I would also look at the information when it starts to count up the number of units that are within a given elementary school attendance boundary or middle or high school attendance boundary and um figure out where do I need to make sure that I keep space because I know this development's not coming. It may not reach that level of, uh you know, we may not hit that peak for for quite a long time, but I do see there's some near term impacts that we need to be mindful of and we want to make sure that there's. Mindful of and we want to make sure that there's space that's available there and. Do we need to make changes to attendance boundaries in order to accommodate that new growth that may be coming in? So that's there again, they're really. I think they're part and parcel, but they really serve two different purposes. I, you know, it it might be developing a monthly person, you know, for my personal finance, I might. Generate a monthly budget and have a plan for how I how we approach that, but then when it comes to my retirement and in my long term, it's. A very different mindset that goes into that and, you know, I'm a less. Less affected by by certain things that happen because I know that's just I I let that sit and, you know, so. Sort of approaching it in 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 those different ways. Does that make sense?
No, it 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 does, but I also think of places like Oakland. Where there was massive housing and horrendous decline in enrollment in the in the school district. Right? So based off your student potential analysis in Oakland, they should be at like crazy enrollment, but they're not. Right? So they're just other factors of being charter schools, private schools, other things. That they had built out based off the student potential analysis. That would have been not a really great yield.
Cause even. For this this will not account for things like that level of gentrification in certain parts of the city.
It's hard for us to, I I I only say that because it's hard for us as a school board to figure out like, what is that? What do we do?
What do we do? Where we go, Dr. Hildreth, what do we do? Cause we know, I mean, that is the hard part here because we know that we have schools. I mean, we have schools with a thousand kids. We have a, you know, a virtual program, you know, that when the kids come on campus, it's sixty kids and so. And, you know, being in those rooms where it's hard to figure out where to put speech because there's all these other spaces here and we know. That where you're talking about putting. Other than Elkhorn, with the exception of many of the other building impacts are impacting schools that are already. Don't have a lot of extras. So what is your thought with next steps on this data in terms of, I know this is just discussion. But obviously we're here with a purpose too. So what is your thought in terms of how to interpret this data?
Yeah, I asked the same question to Justin and and the rest of the cooperative strategies team. Now that we have this information, what do we do, especially reconciling? Decline birth rates. It as as. We heard before, they're declining and that's not just. West Sacramento. They're just declining and so we have to contend with that decline. Yet respond to potentially. We having new students. And what they shared with me is, as he was saying, the near term and long term planning. Will know more each year. Will know more as the development occurs if. We receive this, the number of potential students that we thought we had. This is this. Re- these reports are based upon the information we have right now. And based upon historical trends and each year we get more and more data to help inform us on. How we're going to make decisions in the future. So what they shared is really focus on the next five years with your eye on the future, as he was just saying. So as he shared at the beginning of this conversation, they feel really confident about the next five years. And in the next five years, we're going to have a lot of change, not just with the development in the area, but also welcoming more of our TK students. How many are going to join us? How is that going to affect us? Are they going to stay with us? And one great thing about our contract with cooperative strategies is. We will be continuing our relationship with them to be able to continue to refine. These projections. So this is the the floor of what we have. And then as we get more data next year, then this will change and get refined so that we can make those long term plans. So short answer, let's focus on the next five years, continue to gather gather data. To inform us of how we are going to be affected based upon the information we have. In the next few years in our current situation.
I think the the other piece of that and is also looking at program programs. Looking at how are we really enhancing the instructional programs? Do we want to look at really specific programs at different sites? As another way to maximize the spaces that we have. Based on specific programs that take into account the interest of our students and our families, so. This helps us think about how are we planning for the future and it helps us to think about how are we utilizing? The space that we have and maybe how we can utilize that space a little bit differently.
My wondering is, President Kirby has always said this, our campuses that are, we have maximum capacity in classrooms. We haven't changed our attendance boundaries and I I know nobody wants to hear it. Attendance boundaries. Right? That play into this. We have a census report. Do we wait another ten years? Do we do analysis that? It is, it is a question. We could do magnets, which is something we've been talking about ever since I've been on this board. But there's also the other, how many kids are being transferred into to different schools? And do we look at attendance boundaries? If you're thinking about the future. Because we do, we also know that there's lots of vacancies in. Our, some of our schools, even though we will begin to modernize those schools, maybe it'll track. But we've been on a lot of campuses where to. President Kirby's all this point is that they are. Unpossibly under enrolled, right? Like there's aren't a lot of kids in those. It's just, that's part of this conversation too. I want to put on the table. It's not just these data. There are other things we need to consider.
Well, and when it comes time to boundary discussions, we know that we have to, we have a legal obligation with busing. With, you know, families who are a certain distance and we know benefits of many families, mine included. Uh, working families rely on their children being able to ride their bikes home or walk home. And so there's just so many factors. With that, so. I, if we're talking about a attendance boundary piece, it would be important to. Know if that's a conversation that is looking at that you all think it needs to happen also within. The next year or if it needs to happen, you know. What is the thought with that? Yeah, in terms of when that discussion is too. And I think to the program point. I don't know if many of us have heard about, since the surveys all went out on childcare, I got many, many messages. But that is a big critical piece, knowing that we have childcare and free. And good programs for kids after school and I think with TK that has a big impact on our enrollment and keeping kids.
And so again, down boundary lane comes hand in hand with. What about seven, eight grade middle school as its own separate entity? That changes the dynamic of what each school can hold. So in terms of what the thoughts are on that. You know, is something else that we definitely like to hear about.
The task force?
Yeah, from the task force.
One of the reasons we have the task force, just a middle school task force in particular. Of one of hearing what are the strengths of the current programs that we have? What is maybe an opportunity for us to make some changes or to add something? And we're looking at that and when I think about programmatic, it's the same way of. What are we doing now that we can enhance as we think about what shifts? Might need to be made and so we know specifically if we're talking about. A standalone middle school that would. Everything. And so it is looking at. If that is something we're going forward with, when would that happen? Where would that be? So that's more of the longer. Term kind of discussion because of all of the implications.
How much longer term though? I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have to make some decisions about boundaries in the near future because of. Building and new, you know. As it projects out now, it looks like, you know, Stonegate is gonna be pretty close to, if not already. Capacity, right? Southport. You know. While they're in declining enrollment, there there's new building developments that would be within their boundaries. So I don't know. I don't know if. You know. Waging to see or maybe game planning out two different scenarios.
Yeah, we don't, we shouldn't be approving school. We only have so much money and we should not be approving school remodels with model if if there's any discussion. So I think if middle school task force needs to come to us and you think that there might be something, I think that needs to happen.
So yes, so we know that the middle school task force is looking to bring recommendations. What they talked about for at least this year before the end of. You, we know that they will come in with some recommendations. We will be planning and thinking about, okay, our next steps. Our first step was getting this information out. To the board. So before we begin any kind of long term planning or visioning. We wanted to ensure that all trustees are aware of the information. That we're using as a foundation to make recommendations of what is the best way to.
Can I add to that? And so with what Dr. Everett shared, you know. Or we now we have the foundation and then it's our responsibility to bring to you. Plans for the next year, two years, three years, five years, to be able to create, as he said, the near and long term plans. And it's it's going to require, as I said before, a lot of monitoring. We are still recovering districts from COVID. Are more students going to come back to us? Are they going to continue to make different choices? And so a huge part of whatever steps we take in our next plan is monitoring. And so setting those systems in place to monitor, as we discussed at the beginning, the ships, how many students are going and coming to us? From private schools, charter schools. Um, what are their interests, their exit interviews? What systems might we be able to put in place to help us to monitor so that? We are not reactive, that we can be pro.
Pressy Pizari raises a good point. If the middle school task force is going to recommend a stand, bringing back a middle school. That's not in our master plan. Nor is that the what was bonded for. Right? Just just wanted to acknowledge that, that that's that's something we have to. We don't have money for it. I'm not saying that doesn't mean that we wouldn't go out, but it's just something that you're putting on the table that we need to consider.
Renovations would have to be made somewhere to something.
Yeah, I mean, the we have to touch the north side schools that haven't been touched and.
Modification, if there's a modification that needs to be made to the design that we're doing, we need to know that. I think.
Second master plan.
Yeah, I mean, we we have our commitment. We know it's there. I don't think there's any change there. It's just a matter of. That keeps me up at night. That's kept me up at night for a long time.
Our master plan when we did it did not take in account a standalone.
Can I ask, this is a small number in the scheme of life, but since we have decline, since we immediately have in this current moment. Not thinking about the future, but have declining enrollment. Do you know who is doing the inner, the transfer process in terms of signing off? What that looks like? So we can talk about, you know, those conversations being more of. Why are you going? Here's what we have here to offer, really understanding and and maybe trying to. Keep some of those kids that were signing off to go.
That is a a conversation that I know Dr. Burns and he's leading. The work on attendance and enrollment. And so as he he being new to that position this year, that's one of the things that he's looking at. What are some? First, that's how do we do this? What is the process that we use so that we can take this year to? Determine what modifications do we want, thinking about. The questions we're asking if people, when people are entering our district or if they're exiting our district, we want to know why. Coming in, what led you to Washington Unified? And if you're leaving, what is causing you to leave, especially if it's. You know, you're moving out of state, you know, that's a different, but if you're staying really regional. That's the kind of information we want to collect. So we're looking at the forms, we're looking at the process, we're looking at. What information is collected by the district office and what are the conversations happening at the school sites? Do we, are we making sure that we know what information to input in the system? So if we're running reports. Different codes will help us run reports to know information. So this year for us in the attendance enrollment section is about building that foundation of what do we know and what do we? Need to know more about. So the enrollment, the student, all of this is now we're like, okay, we. We can see the big picture and we'll know what we need to do to continue to monitor and give updated information.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Hey, Justin, we're ready to keep going. That was the last slide. Is there a new slide?
That is the last slide. Uh, weigh in anymore just on, you know, things that I would, just from my perspective and how. Other districts have incorporated this into their master plan and. Wrestling with the same things that you all are and, you know, the difficulty of that, there's, you know. This is one piece in that. In that decision making process about how you approach. Whether it's boundaries or modernizing schools and what you prioritize over another. I think the key thing is. Looking at the existing capacity of those schools and trying to get. A good handle on what that capacity is, which is a challenge to figure out whether. Talking about design capacity or program capacity when we look at loading standards and. You know, whether we should be including. Portable classroom capacity or is it a long time, long term goal to get rid of that, those portables? Cause they're aging and they're not working well and all that. So all all of those things I think that you all will have to contend with and. I would look for the the near term and understanding just from a pure, who's in your system now and looking at. What the trends have shown over the last number of years and how that projects forward for the next five or so. I would set an inch, you know, sort of a near term. Facilities plan based on that and that probably does not involve immediately breaking ground on a new school in order to. Accommodate enrollment that's coming in. It's probably smaller tweaks that are made, but then. Next year, we're going to have seabeds and, you know, you'll you'll know who shows up in in August and September at your schools and. Wow, this missed the mark. Now do we need to look at maybe the high projection instead until we get that that new set and understand like? Did something change and do we need to to reconsider some of those? You know, those things that we had plugged into our to our projection, do we not account for? There's a big shift in, you know, more kids that are coming from charter schools or or from wherever and just. Continually revisit those things. This isn't going to, you know, just be something that. Is is going to, you know, guide you for the next. Ten years, year in and year out, you're gonna have to come back to it and and revisit and see what's changed and how has your community changed and. You know, probably go through this process again. I think the student potential analysis, that's something that is more of a very long term, big picture, big strategic decisions. But I would really focus on the enrollment projections for those more near term facility planning decisions you need to make.
So I hear that, are there any other questions? Right now, okay. I hear then that as it ties into enrollment considerations, we have middle school task force will come to us in June. And that we will continue to keep a pulse and if we need to look at boundary. Attendance pieces that that would come to us. And then enrollment and transfers are what we're looking at internally and making updates and changes. Is there anything else? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is really helpful information. Lots of good graphs. It was hard to prepare for this meeting with a few of those graphs that. So look at them. So I appreciate having you break it all down for us and and thank you for that.
Thank you all. We we appreciate the opportunity.
It helps to know the immediate. All right. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening and with that we are. All right, oh, Al, did you have any questions?